Commissioner Ward? We have two minutes.
I want to, like, going on to what Commissioner Fox was talking about when it comes to the lease. So say, say if somebody in the middle, you know, terminates that comes back to this body to be determined who is the next tenant. So we wouldn't have any say. That I don't like, just sharing that with my colleagues.
But that's already in the lease. I mean, we don't have any control over that, right?
That's correct.
The current lease gives the tenant, which is Mr. Navarro, the right to, or if it's sold to somebody else, the right to designate who goes in under certain conditions. I'm looking at city attorney.
Mayor, for clarification, as long as it's the uses that are in the lease, which is a restaurant use or an office use and the open space, as long as it's that use, you'll have no control over who the subtenants are.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Fox?
Would you mind going back to the slide with the, I thought that the leases were, like, 20 years or something? So, I mean, are we talking about they could just terminate those leases? Is that what we're talking about, if somebody else comes in? Or are we talking about after those leases are over?
So the first lease that ends is, is the University of Miami. So 2030 is when the first lease would be, would be of her discussion.
Someone can always terminate their lease early, and we would have cause of action against them, but anybody can turn their lease early. All right, it's five o'clock. No more questions. We'll get to this when we get to the companion item. This meeting of the CRA is hereby adjourned. And we will move right properly. Chris, what I wouldn't do is go too far because we may be reconvening the CRA meeting after we finish the city commission meeting. Because I know you have another item on there, right?
Yes.
Okay. Why don't you guys change your name tags? President Lambert, President Lambert, President.
Yes.
I'll come back for you.
Okay, she's good.
Yeah, I just have to be over there because I got to speak. Thank you.
I know. The second item has a companion to it? Well, do you want to do? Okay, all right, okay. Oh, it's not for me. Good evening, everyone. Let me call to order this meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Tuesday, October 14th, 2025, and the time is 5:01 PM. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence, please. President Lambert, you want to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me read into the record the rules of civilian law which govern this body and its meetings. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comment shall be addressed through the city commission as a whole and not to any individual in the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person desiring to address the commission shall file a written request with the city clerk prior to the consideration of the matter by the commission or prior to the public comment portion of the meeting. That comment card shall include the agenda item the person wishes to address, including the person's full name, address, and the numbered agenda item. Please govern yourself accordingly as a person will not be recognized if the comment card is not completed in full. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Under the consent calendar, item 8.7, it's requested to be pulled from the agenda and brought back at a future date. We don't have the date certain that, given that it is not in action by ordinance or public hearing. So that's item 8.7. Staff is requesting to pull that item and bring it back at a future date. And then I want to note for the record, the request of the continuance, you know, of two items under public hearing, which are quasi judicial. Item 10.1, that relates to 514425, a rezon, I'm sorry, that's the ordinance number. The item relates to 5400 North Flagler Drive. We have a request for continuance to the October 27th, 2025 city commission meeting. That continuance would have to be voted on when the board gets to that item. And we also have a request for the, from the applicant for item 10.3, which relates to the property at 2900 Broadway. I said 10.3, I stand corrected, that's item 10.2. And that continuous request will also have to be acted on by separate action of the board when you get to that item.
Do they have a date certain for 10.2, for the continuance?
That continuance is to October 27th, 2025, Mayor. But when you look at item 10.3, it's related to item 10.2, so I'm going to ask the city attorney, I think both items will have to be continued.
Yes, both items should be continued.
All right, so we'll consider motions when we get to that portion in the meeting, correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, you mentioned item, what, 8.?
Seven.
Seven.
Under the consent.
All right, now that's a CRA request. So CRA is requesting that it be continued?
City staff and CRA staff are requesting the continuance, or to pull, just to pull that item, and we will bring it back at an appropriate date.
All right, so it's just going to be forward, we don't have a date certain yet?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Let us now resume the agenda, and there is a proclamation. Do we have folks from Roserian Academy here? Okay, fantastic. We'll be proclaiming October 25, 2025, as Roserian Academy's 100th anniversary. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce a proclamation that celebrates a century of academic excellence and community impact. In 1925, Bishop Patrick Berry recognized, recognized the growth, the growing need for Catholic education in Palm Beach County, and with the dedicated support of the Adrian-Dominican Sisters, founded Roserian Academy. For 100 years, Roserian Academy has served as a cornerstone of our community, fostering academic excellence, integrity, and civic responsibility in generations of students, while helping children of all faiths build a strong foundation for life. The school's faculty, staff, teachers, families, and alumni, both past and present, have demonstrated unwavering dedication and support in preparing students for success in a rapidly changing world. Generations of Roserian graduates have carried forward the school's proud tradition of excellence, enriching the educational, cultural, and community life of West Palm Beach and beyond. The City of West Palm Beach joins this momentous centennial celebration, which stands as a testament to the school's enduring legacy and the profound impact it has had on the lives of thousands of students and their families. So today, I, Mayor Keith A. James, proudly proclaim October 2025 as Roserian Academy's 100th anniversary celebration in the City of West Palm Beach. Joining me to accept this proclamation are two individuals whose leadership and dedication guide the academy into its second century. Virginia Devine, Head of School, and Nicholas Coleman, Chairman of the Board. So please join me in congratulating them and the entire Roserian community on this remarkable achievement. If you'll come join me. Come up, I'll present you the proclamation, we'll take a picture.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. One or both of you want to say some words?
Thank you, Mayor, and on behalf of Roserian Academy, I'd like to thank you very much for this award. We're so honored and proud to have been on Flagler Drive in West Palm Beach since 1925. We have so much to celebrate as a school with a very strong academic program, faith foundation, good athletics. So we try to offer the students the best education that they could receive. So to be honored in this way, we're very grateful. Thank you.
Do any of the commissioners, are you all Roserian, anybody Roserian Academy? Oh, okay, Commissioner Fox and Commissioner? Okay, well, why don't you all say a couple of words then? Commissioner Fox?
I just, I did want to say a couple of words. I did go to Roserian, I went there back when it was all girl's school and high school. So I have very fond memories. I was about to start singing the Roserian song with you all, but I'm just excited that we could celebrate you tonight, and thank you for all that you continue to do for the students of West Palm Beach.
Commissioner Ward?
I'll mimic that, I didn't go there, but my daughter does, and she's been taken care of ever since she was one years old, and I so appreciate the environment that you guys have created there for all your students. It's really a blessing to be able to go there every day and bring her there and know she's safe and taken care of and, and very well educated, so congratulations.
Very good. Congratulations again. And I don't want to cut anyone off. Commissioners, if any one of you, you didn't go there, it was all girl's school, did you, Commissioner Peduzzi?
So I would have gone there if they had let men in at the time. I went to a diocesan school, to Cardinal Newman, but the, the option wasn't there for me at the time, but congratulations.
All right, very good, okay. Moving right along with our agenda, item 7.1, we have a receive and file, submit the following report from the Internal Auditor's Office, IT Internal Penetration Test Audit Report, Part Two. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move for approval, I move to approve, receive, and file.
It's been moved as our second.
I do have discussion, Mayor. Am I allowed to have a discussion on this, or?
Well, yeah, if you can have discussion, sure.
I just, it was a comment that as the president of the commission and that we serve as the Chair of the Audit Committee, which I know each of us have taken our turn at that, and I'm just very proud of our IT department and their responses and their participation in this audit. So thank you so much for keeping the city's data safe.
Okay, I heard the motion. Do we have a second on that?
Yes.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Now commissioners, we'll look at consent item 8.6 through 8.9 with the exclusion of 8.7. Any comments, questions on consent?
Just the one comment card, I think.
Okay, Commissioner, President Lambert, you said?
A comment card.
No, I got a comment, I'll take care of that. Any comments from the commission? It's, it's 8.1 through 8.10 with the exception of 8.7. Did I, did I say 8.? I'm sorry, but I appreciate you correcting me, thank you. 8.1 through 8.10 with the exception of 8.7. Any comments? Okay, we do have one card, Michael Cleveland on item 8.4.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. The dollar amount indicates that there's a number of children have already been identified. My question would be, is that amount shared between both campus, or is that each campus get that amount? My other question would be snacks, are these snacks cooked, prepared, or bag type snacks? Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see anyone from the library here. Is Mr. Fonda out there still? All right, we'll get answers to those questions for you. Okay, if there are no comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the consent calendar items 8.1 to 8.6 and 8.8 to 8.10.
Second.
It's been moved in second, a discussion. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, we will now turn to item 9.1, Resolution Number 205-25, approving new economic development grant programs.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Robbie Sami, Economic Development Specialist. Very excited to be presenting Resolution 205-25 today, putting some new grants on the books, hopefully. Today, I'll go over a quick review of the existing programs we have as far as the city grant programs are concerned. I'll give you a high level overview of the new programs that we're proposing, as well as all the strategic goals that these programs will meet, and time for Q and A at the end. The first program that we have existing, as far as the city catalog is concerned, for economic development programs is the Ad Valorem Tax Exemption for Job Creation Ordinance. This allows businesses that are property owners to apply for a 100% Ad Valorem tax exemption, but only for the, the tax that comes from the city. So this would exclude school district or water management district taxes. The second program is the Building Improvement Grant, which you've seen me present here at the city commission. Our most recent example of this would be Roosters that took advantage of this, that just opened on Belvedere Road, as well as Dixie Brewery and Grill, which will be having their ribbon cutting here shortly. The third program currently on the books is the Merchant Industry Association Creation Program. We've seen a number of businesses take advantage of this as well. Speaking of Dixie Grill, they're part of the Brewery Association. Most recently, we have some businesses in the historic Northwest that took advantage of this as well. So moving on to the six programs that we're proposing tonight, I should mention that these are all a direct result of our 2018 economic development study. That said, we needed to bolster our offerings and diversify our offerings as well. I should also note that these six were presented at a BDB Economic Stakeholders Meeting back in April, and they were all very well received. I should finally note as well that three of these programs were also adopted by the CRA in their Strategic Finance Plan back in September. I'll be giving you a high level view of these six programs today. The Business Grand Opening Grant, the Creative Signage Support Grant, Climate Smart Business, the Business Expansion Retention Support, Expert Permit Compliance, and the Sunny Headquarters Grant. So the first new grant program is the Business Grand Opening Grant Program. There are a couple of municipalities that already have this, as well as a couple of organizations within Palm Beach County. Our DDA has a version of this, City of Green Acres, City of Boynton Beach, so forth. So this is just a grant to allow our businesses to open with their best foot forward. It's a quick $1,000, up to $1,000 supplemental grant to show some support at the onset of our new businesses. They can use these funds for a variety of things, point of sale system, security system should they need it, or if they're looking to market and advertise their grand opening event, they can use the funds for that as well. There are some supplemental benefits if they are looking to host a ribbon cutting ceremony. Mayor, I'd like to hold, host those. City Commissioners, if scheduling allows, we would like to have you at those as well, so that'll continue. And of course, we will try to coordinate some social media exposure with them as well on our newsletter, website, things of that nature. The second grant we're proposing is the CSS Creative Signage Support Grant. Commissioner Lambert, this is a seed that was planted when we first met with the Southside Businesses when I first started here about over a year ago with Administrator Johnson. Those businesses at the south end of Dixie were struggling to brand their businesses, brand their districts, drive traffic to their locations. I later heard the same concerns from Rafael Clemente when he was dealing with businesses around Coleman Park. So because of those two concerns, we have a culmination of this grant here. It's to really create some iconic signage throughout the city, which will allow us to increase the quality of place and really showcase the diversity of our businesses and our business associations. So this is up to $15,000 to create some iconic signage throughout the city. And what we really mean here is not your standard shopping mall type steins. We want to go, you know, steps above that. If you look at Hive as an example, very clean branding, elegant, and then, as well as Pig Beach, it's bold, it's eye catching visual. So those are the signage that this, this grant could cover. Use of funds would be graphic design consulting, brand consulting, of course, the installation of the sign itself with permitting fees and so forth. The third grant is the Climate Smart Business Grant. Mayor, this is in line with, with your mission to achieve net zero emissions, to really help businesses start to implement sustainable practices within the city of West Palm Beach. And I'd like to pause here and give a quick shout out to the Office of Sustainability. Elaine and Laura, they were instrumental in helping me be in the trenches conducting research for this grant. So we're proposing up to $85,000 for businesses that would complete all four tiers. By no means do they have to complete all four tiers, we would love it if they do. And also, you cannot just start anywhere on, on the four tiers, meaning you have to, you have to complete the prerequisite tier in order to move on to the next tier. What do I mean by that? Tier number one starts at water efficiency, so they have to start with water efficiency before moving on to tier two, three, so on and so forth. So replacing their old toilets with high efficiency toilets, high efficiency urinals, installing regular water flow adapters, things of that nature. Energy efficiency, replacing their energy consuming halogen bulbs with LEDs perhaps, or their old HVAC systems that need to replace with higher CER ratings, higher energy ratings. Then moving on to building efficiency, up to $30,000 for buildings to implement cool roofing systems or implementing high solar refractant paints. So this has been very successful out of Texas, Nevada, New Mexico. These are paints that reflect a certain number of solar heat to reduce the urban heat island effect. So we also have funds dedicated to recycled FFE. We've seen this as an example in Burger-Fly restaurants where they make tables and chairs out of recycled Coke bottles and such, so this would apply here as well. Finally, the, the last tier is the Resource Efficiency, up to $35,000 for businesses who choose to take advantage of resources such as charge at work, which will install EV charging stations at your place of work or install solar panels. Supplemental benefits for this grant include, they can apply for certifications and seals to display on their businesses from associations such as Green America or the Florida Green Building Coalition. I'm also working with our Office of Sustainability to work on a city-specific green designation seal that businesses could display as well, and I have more information on that as we get closer. The fourth grant is our Business Expansion and Retention Support Grant. I should mention, this is a, a copy of the CRA's Relocation and Development Assistance Grant. Reason being, the CRA sort of uses it as their Swiss Army Knife because it really delivers targeted assistance to what the business needs. We, we cannot anticipate all needs of a business or all problems of a business, so this is sort of that catch-all. So we'll deliver up to $25,000 for qualifying expenses, whether it's interior build-out or demolition or permitting and so forth. And they have to meet certain criteria, a lot of these overlap with the CRAs, that's improving merchandise mix, filling vacancies in our commercial space, and creation of jobs. And if you'll recall, on the CRA side, Darren from The Best Barbecue was a recipient of the relocation grant. So just an example of what this could be used for, helping a business expand from, say, a food truck to a brick and mortar location. Grant five is the EPC, the Expert Permit Compliance Grant. A lot of the complaints that we sometimes get is, from businesses, is that they are stuck in planning, or that their permits are stuck. So Chris Roux, myself, we had a meeting with our senior building official, and we learned that the quality of plans being submitted most of the time are lacking here, or the businesses are not grasping the reviews and the notes that our building officials have given them. So there's, there's a gap. So to address this gap, the city would contract with an expert in building code, both in the state and the city, and cover 100% of that cost before the plans are even submitted to our building department, in an effort to sort of streamline this process and reduce the amount of back and forth, back and forth, because this is causing months and months of delays. So not every business would, would be eligible, I mean, you'd have to make a sizable impact in the city as far as capital investment, the size of, of their business, whether you're in a target industry or not, and of course, whether you're creating high quality jobs or not. Finally, the Sunny Headquarters Grant. This is a direct result of all of the attention that we have been getting from corporations and that we expect to continue to get. Most recently, we've seen ServiceNow bringing, you know, over 800 net new high quality positions to our downtown area. We expect things like this to continue. So whereas the CRA was able to, you know, shoulder this grant for ServiceNow because they're coming to our downtown, maybe we have relocations that, that do not come to our downtown, maybe they're strategically placed elsewhere throughout the city. So this would really help incentivize those businesses. And so specifically, we would offer up to $250,000 to advance their technological infrastructure. Many of these corporations have that need anyway. They need advanced fiber optic networks and internal networking systems and so forth, so we would assist them with that. And of course, again, not every business would qualify, they would have to meet business size requirements, high quality job creation requirements, and of course, be within our targeted industry. Finally, as I mentioned, all of these grants are a direct result of our 2018 economic development study. Excuse me, I'm not going to bore you with all of the goals that this meets, just know that the catalog is well appointed and meets all of our goal setting that was outlined in the 2018 study. So with that, staff recommends approval of Resolution 205-25, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Any questions, comments, President Lambert and Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. Wow, surprisingly emotional during a presentation about business development because I just, I think about the number of times I've heard from small business owners who are almost in tears over stress, you know, especially with the permitting process. And so I think that that one is going to be huge for our business owners. And, you know, as I was watching your presentation, I was really thinking about success in all of these programs, and, and for me, success would be determined by the diversity of businesses and the industries that will be represented, represented in the applicants of these grants and the utilization of the full funding and opportunities. And so my question is twofold. One is, how are we planning on marketing this and getting the word out so that we do get a diversity of businesses to apply? And the second question is, how are we monitoring these to make sure that we, you know, are aware if something's not working and if it needs to be adjusted?
Thank you, President Lambert. First and foremost, the first part of your question, how will we market? This really requires internal efforts as well as external efforts with our partners in the community. We have great business owners that are huge champions of the city, like Estrella from the Space Connect, that was really tapped into our Hispanic community, for example. She could be a great advocate for this and will be a great advocate for this. As far as internal efforts, of course, it's going to be blasted in our communication channels, both the CRA, the city. We have newsletters, we have social media, things of that nature. We'll coordinate further events with our communications team, as well as our Chief Marketing Officer, Portia. So those plans are still in development, but those are just a few avenues, to name a few. Your second question was regarding tracking? Okay, so I do keep a personal tracker of all my projects and grants and applications that I've received, as well as pre-application meetings. So those will be tracked on an ongoing basis, the way, the same way I have been.
Excellent, and I just want to say thank you so much. I know it's been, what, about a year now since we had that meeting?
I've been here a year and seven months, so yes.
And I really do feel like you took the feedback that was provided by some of our small business owners and applied it to these programs, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much, this is fantastic. I know how closely you worked with Darren and The Best, seeing that picture come up, it's like the perfect example of how much we can change someone's life, you know, a small business coming up with $25,000, you know, could, it sounds like it might as well be a million. So for us to be able to provide these grants is, I think it's going to be life-changing for a lot of businesses. I see that you listed that it's, funding is first come and first qualified basis, but I'm curious, I don't know if you had, the qualifications were listed in your slides, and maybe I missed them, but also, do we have a budget that's set aside for, I saw the numbers of each grant, $1,000 and $15,000 and up to $85,000, but do we have, I guess, are they budgeted by each different grant has a line item for each grant, or is there a big pot for all of them, and it's whoever comes in first for all of them, I guess, to look at together? If you could talk a little bit about that process and? If you could talk a little bit about that process, and I guess the number that's in the budget for now, and I know that we could always increase it hopefully in the future.
Hopefully. Sure, thank you, Commissioner Fox. Yes, it's the latter. I have one pot that all funds come out of, economic development. Usually, that's about $300,000 per year, per fiscal year. If there's any carryover, I'm fortunate enough to be able to roll that over into the next fiscal year. So for example, for this upcoming fiscal year, we have $400,000 to spread across all of the grants. There is no dedicated funding for each specific grant. So that's where the first-come, first-qualified comes from.
Commissioner Ward and Commissioner Warren?
And thank you. I'm as excited about this as my colleagues. I think these are great programs. When you talked about the associations, I'm immediately thinking, like with marketing, you know, Northwood Merchants Association. So essentially, they as a body could come to you all and potentially qualify. What does it take that they have to be SunBiz-registered? Do they have to be in Not For Public? What are the...
Those are the basic qualifications that we ask for. Each grant has nuances, of course, as far as eligibility is concerned, but yes, the district as a whole could apply for some of these grants, like for example, the signage grant that we discussed with its outside business owners as well, as a body. And so at the foundational level, we require that they are on SunBiz, they have registered with the city, the state, they have a business tax receipt on record, they are licensed and permitted, so on and so forth.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Warren?
To me, I think it's remarkable to be able to be a city that can attract businesses like Goldman Sachs, ServiceNow, Cleveland Clinic, Class B office spaces, to be able to support those types of businesses and small businesses. That means that we, as a body, are supporting every tier of business. And that means that we're able to affect a lot of different households, and I believe that that is something that differentiates us from a lot of other bodies that are doing this type of work, to be able to provide this type of space, to see people in our community grow, to see people have different opportunities, and to create an atmosphere where people are earning and spending those dollars back in their local community, I think, again, is innovative of this body, and I just wanted to say, great job.
Thank you, Commissioner Warren.
Any other, oh, Commissioner, I'm sorry, I gave you a demotion. Sorry, Madam City Administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to make a point of clarification on the budget side of the equation here. So historically, we had been budgeting $300,000 annually for this program, but when we got into the situation where we had to cut the general fund budget, it was reduced to $150,000. So that's how much we budget annually up until fiscal year '26. We then increased it from $150,000 to $265,000, so that would be the annual budget. As a matter of procedure, any funding that is not utilized is carried forward. We are estimating about $140,000 that will be carried over, that would then give us that $400,000-plus for the economic development incentive program.
Thank you for that clarification. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
May I move approval of Resolution Number 205-25? Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Do we have any cards on this? Hearing none? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now turn to item 9.2, Resolution Number 236-25, authorizing the issuance by the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency of not to exceed $29 million in tax-revenue bond taxable Series 2025 for the purchase of leases located at 255 Narcissus Avenue and 185 Banion Boulevard. Commissioners, this is the companion item to the item that we discussed at length at the CRA meeting, so take that into consideration as you're considering this item. Mr. Ruge, if you wanted to tee this up?
For the record, Chris Ruge, Executive Director of the West Palm Beach Community Redevelopment Agency. Yes, as the mayor mentioned, this is the companion item to the discussion that we had at the CRA meeting. The state statutes require the companion item to come to this body as well for consideration, so we are meeting that obligation by coming to this board for approval. Happy to continue the conversation, you know, on this matter. I can go through the presentation again if you'd like, whatever, really, Mayor, you would, how you would like me to proceed.
Well, hopefully it's still fresh, but if, obviously, if anybody wants to refer back to the full presentation, we can. So commissioners, if you like, we can continue our conversation. I know there might have been some other questions that folks didn't have a chance to ask during the CRA meeting, they might want to ask now, so yes, I'll get to your card. So any questions, comments from the dais? Commissioner Ward, I don't know if you had some more questions on this matter or comments?
I know we were still, yes, thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. I know, I guess I just didn't get clarification on that lease issue, so if they, if somebody were to come, if the tenant were to leave and they would come back to the city, if they were meeting those specific uses, it would not come to this body? Okay. All right, that was my main question.
Any other questions or comments from the dais? Okay, we do have one card.
Thank you, I'm Mike, sorry. Mike Schmidt, Downtown Neighborhood Association. So I just want to preface everything by saying that I am also very appreciative that the city owns that Helen Wilkes site. I think it's terrific that we maintain control over the waterfront, that's very important. I also, I wish Frank were still here. Mr. Navarro, I think has done a very, very good job of managing that place. We've got a good thing going there, and it's a tremendous credit to him that he got that thing going. I also think the CRA does a very, very, very good job at their stated mission of tidying up neglected areas of downtown and whatnot. The only aspect of this project, though, that makes me nervous is, you know, I know that Frank is going to be sort of a midwife landlord for the first three years, or I think he maybe even offered five years as a possibility or something, but who at the CRA is going to take over for Frank once he's done, you know, with his transition period? Because being a commercial landlord is a very, very specific skill, and some people are good at it and some people aren't. There's 10 zillion landlords in the world, and everybody knows bad ones. There's loads of bad landlords out there, okay? Even if they've been doing it for years. So you have to have somebody in there who really, really knows what they're doing. They know how to select the tenants correctly, and all that, all the kinds of things that Frank has been doing for years. And so my only kind of question is, would the CRA, I mean, who in the CRA would take over as landlord, which is highly, highly, you know, it's a highly skilled position, or would they just continue to have, would they hire a replacement, a private professional replacement for Frank, to make sure that things are done properly? Because, you know, I guess the way to think of this is, you know, imagine if ER Bradley's also decided to sell. They've got a great, great cash flow too, they're crushing it, you know, just like Elizabeth is crushing it. But things change. If you're a landlord, things like COVID come along, and you need people right at the spur of the moment to make fast decisions about, do we abate rent? Do we cheap charge him? Do we get rid of this guy? Do we bring in this guy? And I'm not sure that the CRA or city government is really the most efficient or the best, most competent landlord that we can get in that position to make sure that things are run correctly. We have a great thing going on on that site, and so my only concern is just that we don't screw it up. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, any, Commissioner Beduzzi?
I think he brings up a good point, and that, you know, the CRA would either have to take it over or we'd have to hire someone. I don't know if that added expense has been contemplated. I don't know that we can get it. I don't know if Mr. Navarro is offering it to us at a discount at $35,000 per year. It may cost more than that on the open market, I'm not sure, but it's certainly a consideration that we may be, after that three-year period of time, you know, left with having to manage it ourselves. I don't know if it's a question, but I do have, that's all I have for right now. I can't remember what my other question was now.
Okay, I mean, and again, that's three years, possibly five years down the road, where the financial condition, the revenues of that situation might change significantly, but that's a bridge to be crossed by the then-sitting CRA board. Commissioner Ward?
Well, thank you. I mean, that was a, did you guys contemplate at all what the average cost would be for property management and potentially picking up that, what it would do for our net each year?
Yes. And, you know, we feel that, you know, I mean, right now, it's comparable to what Frank is charging. So, but that would be part of, you know, the, sort of the onboarding, you know, having Frank onboard to, you know, help us establish what that succession planning is. I mean, we want his guidance in those decisions, to help us work through those, find the right firm, and then having it lined up well before, and having that plan in place so that we continue to operate it in the high level of functionality that everybody's grown to expect. That's definitely, that was one of the very early conversations with Frank.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you for that answer. And this is just to the body. That has been one of my biggest concerns is us taking this over, obviously, the financial aspect in the CRA meeting was responded to, and I appreciate that because I think it's important that, you know, before the clock ticks, and, because we do own this, and eventually we will be able to figure out what happens with it in the future. It's not like we're coming in as a third party. We own this asset. We already have the control over this asset. And to Commissioner Fox's point, they come to us when they want to do the activation within the open space, which is kind of the only area, when it comes to our waterfront, our goals there that can be tinkered with, other than, you know, replacing tenants and replacing that building and that structure. But I am very nervous about government getting involved and then overseeing it and it turning sour. And so I, you know, to Mayor, to your point, you know, down the road, I would hope that this body does find a third party because we would have to staff it with the right person under the CRA. We would, that line item would then continue forward on everything else versus hiring a company in us, and then we would be responsible for overseeing it. I'm very nervous about that. I see the long-term benefit, but I just wanted to share those comments with the rest of the body.
Point well taken, and I would think that the replacement board or the successor to us would have that similar wisdom in terms of hiring professionals. This is not a, you know, single-family residence here. This is a major asset in the city's crown, so I would think they would be smart enough to get professionals. And like what Mr. Ruge said about having an onboarding process, having Mr. Navarro help us identify a potential successor well in advance of him stepping down, but I would hope that this, whoever replaces us on this dais would have that kind of wisdom to follow through on that. Commissioner Beduzzi, and then Commissioner Warren?
Considering the fact that we already own this property, and it comes back to us in 42 years, 40-some years, are there any, and I don't think there are, but are there any tax revenue consequences for us in this deal if we approve this? Is there any affecting of revenue that would come into the city in terms of taxes? I guess probably wouldn't, because we already own it, so that even though it has a commercial purpose, a private commercial purpose, we're not receiving any tax revenue from it, are we?
The, well, so a couple of points. First, Commissioner, I don't want you to lose sight of the fact that there is the potential for an additional 25 years to the 42. So when you say we get it back in 42 years, that's not necessarily the case. It can be extended an additional 25 years, number one. Number two, the bonds are taxable bonds, meaning that, you know, we're using it to acquire this, and then, you know, the property then has the ability to turn a profit. So it's going to pay taxes just like any other normal, you know, proposing asset, and those TIF dollars, you know, they do come back to the CRA because it's within the CRA boundaries.
Just follow-up then, so will we realize any appreciable difference in, with, if we vote for this tonight, in revenue that comes into the city, other than obvious the financial whole setup of this deal? Is there any tax implications or revenue implications that haven't been mentioned?
Not that I'm aware of.
Mr. Front, would you like to weigh in on that? Our CFO?
Sorry, I'm nodding in agreeance with Mr. Ruge.
Oh, you are?
Yes, yes. She is.
In agreement, so I'm like, that's bad.
Can you repeat that? We didn't hear.
You want to speak a little bit slower on that, please? Just take your time. Let her say something, let her repeat herself, Chris.
In agreeance with Mr. Ruge.
Thank you, thank you, all right.
I apologize.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Warren, sorry.
Mr. Ruge, I think in hindsight, it may have been better for this body if the additional work had been done to see what property management would cost outside of Mr. Navarro being involved with this project. I think that that may have answered several of the questions that have been asked, but I am optimistic that he said that he may extend the time that he stays with the property from three to five years, so I'm hopeful about that. And the good thing also is, we're talking about three commercial properties, three commercial leases, and we're not talking about 100 residential leases that we would need a property manager for, or a large commercial space with a lot of different tenants inside. We're talking about three, three tenants and property management for that. So I don't know that that would be the most difficult task for us to fulfill moving forward, and I don't, and hopefully, it would not be something that would be a great expense to the city, considering, again, that it's three commercial spaces and not 30. In the event that we did not maintain control of this property, and there was a use that was similar to the ones that are specified in the lease agreement, different types of uses that could fit that, would a bar fit and be able to go into those spaces?
Yes, there's one there now.
No, I mean, like, if someone wanted, like a bar, bar, like a...
Like a club.
Like a club bar.
Like a club?
Like a club bar.
He wanted to go to the club?
Exactly. Would they be able to turn that into the club?
Sorry. Yes.
Is it the rooftop a club?
It's a, it's a bar.
But it could be, but it could be.
I don't, listen, I'm the first to say, you see all this gray hair up here? I can't remember how to spell a club.
If someone wanted to turn it into an adult supper club, would that fall into the spaces? There are a lot of different, I'm saying that there are different things that people could utilize that space for that are outside of the box of what we're currently thinking as standard operating use.
Yes.
So, I just think that it's...
Nancy, did you want to weigh in on that, or?
I would just weigh in. It may depend on the specific facts, but yes, there's wiggle room there, so you could end up with something other than what you're contemplating right now.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. Well, first I want to say, I mean, sure, these are only three leases, but we have, I mean, the Sunset Lounge is only one lease, and 314 Klimatis is only one lease, and we haven't had the best track record with that. So I, I want to go back to what you just mentioned about additional 25 years. I don't, I've never heard that before. I want to understand, what you're saying is that they have a right, someone would have a right to extend another 25 years, or that we, that they could, or that we could also, do we have a say in that? This is the first I've ever heard of that.
Any answer to that? Yes, please.
The lease term is 50 years, provided that the LSE is not in default at that time, they automatically get an additional 25 years if they choose. So if they're not in default, we do not get the chance to tell them no.
Commissioner Beduzzi?
So let me get this, make sure I understand this. So they don't make any lease payments to us. They acquired it without cost from us, other than the maybe $3 million in general improvements that they had to make in infrastructure to the area. So they get it for the full 50 years, essentially rent-free, and then they can, obviously, they're going to opt for a 25-year extension if there's no consequence in rental payment.
Well, just, there is, at 25 years, they would have to start paying market rent, so for the renewal period, there would be market rent.
Thank you for clarifying that. That makes a difference, but I think we have to assume that it's not going to come back to us then in the 42 years, but it's going to be 25 years beyond that. to us then in the 42 years, but it's going to be 25 years beyond that. We have to assume that we're not going to get it back then for a long time. That makes it, that makes a significant difference in my mind also as to what we should do potentially now. And I did come in here thinking that this was not something I'd be able to support just because of the fact that I didn't have the numbers, I didn't have anyone that told me this is a good investment, I didn't have comps, I didn't have a, an appraisal. But I am relying on our CFO and her statements that this is a sound investment, that she's taken some time and she's really looked at the numbers. And then you, obviously, also, Mr. Ruge and, and Ms. Briesmeister, I'm going to accept those, those recommendations that this is a sound financial investment. But in the future, I would just, you know, if, if we had a little more time, I would have wanted some sort of a market analysis, some sort of a financial analysis as to whether, you know, this thing makes, you know, economic sense with numbers to back it up. I did find it significant that, I think it was Mr. Frant that said that she believes this would command a higher price out in the private market. I believe she was the one that said that. And that is significant in my mind, and hopefully, that's accurate and true, and, but I'm, I'm willing to accept that, and I think I can support this now.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I, I mean, of course, it's probably worth 16 million for the land, but this is not the land. We're not selling the land. We're, this is just the leases. So I, I am really frustrated that this is the first, I've had how many conversations with you about this and with Frank? This is the first I've ever heard of this additional 25 years. So of course, that makes a difference. That's, I don't want to be, I, I can't understand why we're just getting these, this information now that's been known since January, because I want to make the best decision possible for the city, for the residents here. I don't think that we should be taking this on. I think that anyone else that was buying this for 30 million is not going to run it into the ground. I mean, why would they? The whole reason that they would want it would be to be a success so that they could be generating revenue. They're not going to run it into the ground. But now you're telling us at the last minute that suddenly there's an extra, now we're talking about 75 years? I mean, I feel like I'm forced to support this now because I don't, I haven't had the time to like give that more consideration about what happened. So I, I just wanted to go on record in saying that. It's really upsetting that we're just getting this information now.
Any other questions, comments? We have any other cards on this?
No.
I will entertain a motion. Again, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 236-25.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Commissioner Ward?
I want to say that, I want to express the same support that, or the same frustration that Commissioner Fox did. I've had conversations about this. I mean, Commissioner Peduzzi, I heard about this a while ago, and I think it maybe is because that Commissioner Fox and I are just always in communication because we're in CRA districts. And so it was presented to me a while ago, and if I missed that extra 25 years and my, you know, my cupa, I, I, cupa, whatever the phrase is, like, I don't remember us talking about that ever. I, and I've been talking about the terms. I was very distinct about when are we paying back our debt? When are we getting paid back? How many years in between? So that is really throwing me for a loop right now, and I feel the same way as Commissioner Fox. And I, I just want to express, I, I agree with you. I mean, I think that it kind of forces us to move forward with this. But man, that would have been really nice to know that not only do they have the 50 years, they have 25 years and we don't even get to approve it. I'm, I am a little bit frustrated by that.
Discussion. Commissioner Peduzzi?
I agree. I didn't know about it either, and when you said that, it just kind of confirmed in my mind that, you know, that we're heading in the right direction with this. I think you would have made it easier on us if you had said that or if we had known about it, and maybe we missed it. You know, I'm not necessarily blaming you, but some of us don't remember ever hearing that, a 25-year extension option. And knowing that it's, puts it out as a 75-year instead of a 50-year lease, it is significant. And I think that if we don't control the asset for that long, then this becomes an easier question for us. But, you know, as I said, in the future, you know, it would be great to have some numbers to back up, to make sure it's a sound financial decision, and, you know, make sure that we, we know all the nuances, just because I think that your job might have been easier if we had known that information.
Okay, there's a, the motion on the floor, it's been seconded. So any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, Commissioners, are you adverse to reconvening as a CRA after this meeting so that we can clear that up as well? Okay, fine. Thank you, Mr. Ruge. We'll continue at City Commissioning. Okay, so item 10.1 is being continued, so I need a motion to that effect, please.
Mayor, I move that we consider continuation of the second reading of ordinance number 5144-25 and resolution number 216-25 to the October 27, 2025 City Commission Meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we did have a card, but since it's been continued, we don't need to get to the cards. Item 10.2, I believe, is also being continued. So I need a motion to that effect.
Mayor, I move consideration of the continuation of resolution number 228-25 to the October 27, 2025 City Commission Meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now turn to item 10.3. That's not being continued, right?
Yes.
It is being continued. That is also being continued. I need a motion to that effect, please.
Mayor, I move for consideration of continuation of resolution number 229-25 to the October 27, 2025 City Commission Meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Okay, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, we will turn to items from the public. And we do have a few cards, so we have two cards, Danielle Underwood and Michael Cleveland. If you could start making your way to the podium, please. Danielle Underwood and Michael Cleveland.
Danielle Underwood, for the record. I'm here tonight to ask the city, what is your policy on protecting your employees? What if you were being followed? What if somebody damaged your personal vehicle while you were walking to it? What if you felt threatened? I know that each and every one of you would have a security guard or somebody escorting you to and from your vehicles and to and from this meeting and protecting you to the fullest. And we all know, Mayor, a lot of times you have an escort everywhere you go. So what are you guys going to do to protect your city employees, is my question? And I want you to think about that, because you have an ex-city employee who has taunted for over three years, and you, Ms. Fay Johnson, know exactly what I'm talking about, because it's been brought to your attention for many years now. In writing, as an example from myself, I was followed in the courtyard in 2023 by an employee who hated my husband, who was an employee at the city. My husband made numerous complaints about this employee and what they were doing. Nothing was done. My husband was let go. Recently, an employee of yours was threatened, followed, and his car was damaged by this ex-employee whose wife currently is a city clerk in your office, which speaks volumes. This man came to the parking garage, slashed somebody's ragtop on their car, standing and waited for them to potentially hurt them next in wanted confrontation. There are videos, there's an investigation going. And what is the city going to do to protect this employee? That is my question. We all know you guys would be protected very, very well, but what is the city going to do? This man has asked for protection. This man has asked for time to be able to try to get a restraining order. Nobody from the city has reached out to him. I know I've reached out to a couple of you in your offices, and I've spoken to one person. Thank you, Ms. Lambert, for calling me and talking to me about it. But again, what are you going to do to protect the people that work for you? What's going to make them want to do their due diligence in working for the city if you can't protect them? I mean, my family's at a loss because of this man, Robert Watkins, who follows people around. I have filed reports and I have them, and nothing's been done. And now he's actually physically hurt somebody and they're, physically hurt their vehicle and went, is going after them. He's followed them at their homes, he's followed their wives, he's followed me in the courtyard. It's been nine months since he hasn't been employed here, and nine months later, he comes back and does this. What are you going to do to protect people? Think about that, sleep on it. I hope you can sleep, and I hope you wake up and understand what are you going to do to protect your employees?
Thank you very much. Michael Cleveland?
Good evening again. Michael Cleveland, West Palm. You know, I've been attending these meetings since 1988. And every time an issue come before the commission to vote on, some of the commissioners not aware of what was going on or what happened, backup or whatever, appointment form. But yet and still, every time they approve or vote on that issue, that's unbelievable. I don't understand that. If you don't know something, nobody's twisting your arm, don't vote on it. Represent your constituents. That's what you're here for. Tammer Avenue, sometime ago, it was mentioned that it was to be a part of CRA. Is any part of Tammer Avenue in the CRA, or any south side or north side of Tammer Avenue? I was on Tammer the other day, and I noticed the colors on the buildings, these apartment buildings that they painted, look like clowns. I don't know why you allow that. Just make the city and the community look very bad, trashy. Three different colors on one building. And the same thing is happening now on Northwood Road, it's bright green. But hey, you allow it, so I guess nothing to do. When I was on the CRA years ago, Envoy of the Board, we sat down and we worked out colors, sizes, heights, and all that stuff. I guess you draw all that out the door. But my main point is, we need to get back to basics, because even though you're building in this city, a lot of people coming to this city, it's beginning to look trashy. And I don't mean that as a joke, it is. Traffic in the Northwood area along Henrata, Spruce, Dixie, and even Tammer and Australia. Think of California. California takes you about two hours to get a mile. It's coming that way here if we don't do something about the traffic in this city. Thank you. Enjoy your week.
Thank you very much. Okay, well, now turn to comments from the dais. We'll begin with you, President Lambert.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to say congratulations to Don Ramones. They're celebrating their 35th anniversary in the city and this Thursday, and, you know, I think we're all very familiar with the good food that they provide, but I was recently having a meeting with Dina, and she shared with me a program that she doesn't really advertise to get any recognition for, but she advertises to the community who needs it, and that is for the Hispanic and other senior citizens in the community who maybe live alone and, or, or too elderly to cook their own meals, and she provides a fixed-price menu for them, often at her own cost. And I just think that we have a number of unsung heroes in our community who do things like this, and I just wanted to publicly thank her and, and many of our other business owners who do things like this throughout our city. But 35 years in our community, wanted to applaud her for that. And then I also just wanted to say publicly that I was incredibly relieved to hear about the recent release of the Israeli hostages. Having been there about a year ago now and, and meeting with many of the families who had family members taken, I know that they are relieved and that it is every parent and loved one's nightmare to have a family member taken like that. And so looking forward to much more peaceful days ahead. Thank you.
Commissioner Peduzzi?
Thank you. With regard to the public comments concerning safety of our employees, I don't know whether it's the case in this particular case, but I hope that a police report was filed. We have a fantastic police department that follows up on credible threats, and if there was a violation of the law, I'm sure they would investigate it and would take appropriate action. So if that hasn't been done, I would encourage it to be done, and I am confident that our police department will address the issue. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. I also wanted to mention to Ms. Underwood about, this is not acceptable. I, I didn't hear about it directly from her, but I did hear about it from Ms. Johnson earlier this week, that she was having the police department look into the incident, and I appreciate that. But I also think if this could happen one time, it could happen anytime. So, you know, I think we need to start looking at what the security options are in our garage for our employees. You know, it's one thing to investigate after the fact, but another thing for this to have the opportunity to happen again. So I hope that we can look into opportunities to engage with either the security, new security team, to at least be patrolling the garage more carefully and vigilantly, or having our police department take a look at how they can be helping us so that we can protect our employees at all times and that this won't happen again. Thanks.
Commissioner Warren?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to let everyone know that there was a three-day career fair from October 14 through the 16th that began today, with various locations throughout Palm Beach County offering many meaningful job opportunities. Today was at the Fairgrounds tomorrow, Wednesday, October 15th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. It will be at the Palm Beach County Convention Center, Exhibit Hall B, located at 650 Okeechobee Boulevard in West Palm Beach. And Thursday, October 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., the event will take place at the Riviera Beach Marina Event Center, the Newcom Hall Ballroom, which is located at 190 East 13th Street in Riviera Beach. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you. I was going to share the work, job fair, so thank you, Commissioner Warren. The one comment I had was just a question, because we were talking about the waterfront, and we did the waterfront your way, is when are we going to see the results of that and have a workshop related to such? Because obviously, that was a huge discussion tonight, and I, I don't, I don't know about my other colleagues, but I haven't seen any, any update from that, and I know that it was a, a big haul to have all of that done. So do we have any administration, do we have any plans as to when we're going to be presented with that?
I think it's next month, right? With something teed up?
We're coordinating the schedule on that. Yes. I have a conference call scheduled with the consultant. I think the conference call is next week, so we can pin down the date.
Thank you.
And it's going to be rolled out around the same time, and I know we're having a workshop later this month on the downtown master plan, and those two are kind of related, so there was a desire to at least start getting some of that conversation going in addition to the waterfront, since they are related. Okay, any other comments? All right, just a couple, and then again, we're going to reconvene as the CRA. And I did just want to give some statistics about our green market. Opening day was a couple of weeks ago, and it was nothing short of spectacular. More than 20,000 people came out to celebrate the start of the 31st season, which made it our biggest and busiest opening yet. We welcomed a record-breaking 150 vendors, and by 11:30 a.m., at least 30 of those vendors had completely sold out. I'm told that we have five city parking garages, and all of them were full by 10:30 a.m. Our pop-up workshop also sold out days before the market even began. But most importantly, I'm proud to share that this was not only a successful event, but also a safe event, where thousands of people came together to enjoy the day without incident. And I just want to give a public shout-out to all of our first responders, our police, our fire, for again, continuing to keep our city safe and allow us to hold and host these types of events. A lot of commentary on social media about how people did feel safe, they enjoyed seeing the significant police presence that were there, the firefighters there, so kudos to all involved. there. So kudos to all involved. The green market continues to be more than just a Saturday morning tradition. It's a celebration of community and small businesses that make West Palm Beach so special. The green market success a reminder of how much our residents and visitors value experiences that bring people together. Another jewel in the city is Grassi Waters Preserve, an ecological treasure and an outdoor classroom that continues to inspire and educate thousands each year. Last April, I was proud to announce the publication of the city's nonprofit children's book, Sam the Snail Kite and the Secret of the Everglades, created by our own talented team at Grassi Waters Preserve. Since then, we've sold and donated more than 1,000 copies, placing the book in every West Palm Beach Elementary School library, as well as every Palm Beach County Public Branch Library. I'm also pleased to share the Grassi Waters Preserve had a record-setting year. This past year, trail visitation reached its highest level in a decade with more than 81,000 visitors. We also set two additional records, welcoming more than 3,300 students on field trips and reaching over 173,000 people with our Everglades education posts showcasing Grassi Waters wildlife on Facebook and Instagram. These achievements are a testament to the dedication and hard work of our Grassi Waters staff. As I've often said, West Palm Beach is a community of opportunity, and true cities of opportunity are those that ensure every child has equal access to educational resources. So that concludes my remarks for tonight. Good night, and God bless you and the great city of West Palm Beach. And we will now this meeting is adjourned, and we will now reconvene as the CRA of West Palm Beach. And we can dive right into, I believe it was Resolution Number 7.1, Item 7.1, Resolution Number 25-44, authorizing the issuance of a not-to-exceed $29 million tax increment revenue bond taxable series 2025 for the purchase of the ground lease held by Navarro Lowry LLC for the property located at 256 North Flagler Drive and 185 Banyan Boulevard, and Resolution Number 2547 approving the repurchase of the ground lease. Board members, I don't know if you want a repeat of the presentation. If anyone does, we can certainly have Mr. Rue do it. But I think the conversation's still fresh in all of our minds. So are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you. Now that Frank is back, I wonder if I you had mentioned that you would be willing to commit more than three years overseeing this. And I was wondering if we can have you on record to commit to that because I do trust you and your judgment 100% in how we're going to move forward with this. I don't have as much confidence in the CRA board management skills. So yeah, if you wouldn't mind just talking that through and if that was something you were actually willing to commit commit to or what your feelings are. Thanks.
Frank Navarro, Navarro Lowry, Inc. Can I call my wife and ask her? No. Yes, I would. You know, I intend to continue to invest in West Palm Beach. And as I've gotten older and later in my career, I've kind of pared off other markets. So this is where I want to continue to invest, and I'll be here, and I'll have a platform, and I'm happy to do it.
And just piggybacking on that, Mr. Navarro, we would request your assistance in finding your successor, whether you served three years or five years.
Yeah.
So there's an onboarding process for the person who does succeed you.
Right.
If you don't mind helping us with that process as well.
Absolutely. And I do think that I think it's wise that from the moment I got involved in these discussions with Chris and Kim, they both and they each asked if I'd be willing to do that. So your staff and their consultants recognized that issue right from the get-go. And it was an easy yes for me.
Any other questions, comments for Mr. Navarro or for staff? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of resolution number 25-44 and resolution number 25-47.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Frank, if you could come back up, please. And I, as chair of this board, I want I was a commissioner at the time this whole thing got started. So I just want to publicly thank you for making your vision become the successful reality that it has been. That is a tremendous jewel in the crown of West Palm Beach, and it could not have happened without you and your team. So thank you very much for coming up with the vision and also for executing so well.
You're welcome. And also, as someone on the commission at the time, I remember you were very supportive of my pursuit of it, even though there were others who had bigger portfolios than mine. But I just appreciate the confidence that you all showed in me at the time. And then former Mayor Moya did a great job understanding a couple of things that we had to twist and turn to make it work. And I had tremendous support with my own partners, Concord Hospitality, who brought this hotel to us, was, I mean, definitely the key player. So thank you all for that continued confidence. And I hope to be here with you for several years, reporting back about the successes that we're enjoying on that same project.
We look forward to it. Thank you again, sir. Okay, item 7.2, Resolution Number 25-46, approving the conveyance of property located at 204 and 206 North Sappadilla Avenue to the city for the purposes of redevelopment. Is that the one? Was that one we can? Was the companion item was the?
Yes, we pulled it off the City Commission agenda to bring it back. So are is staff proposing to now have the CRA board to hear it?
Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. Yeah, just to keep it in the correct order, we're going to do do a quick presentation on this item, and then we'll then come back to City Commission in two weeks. Because first, the first, the properties have to be disposed to the or excuse me, transferred to the city, and then we accept them.
Okay. And then we'll consider it at that companion item at the next City Commission.
Correct.
Because we won't be having another CRA meeting prior to that time.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Who's speaking?
Armando Fana, Assistant City Administrator. And I apologize, I had some technical difficulties on it, but it was only actually two slides that I had. But these are properties located off Banyan and Sappadilla. There is a sliver of property that is a CRA property. It was part of the historic railroad. It was part of the historic railroad spur. That property is adjacent to those two properties are adjacent to a city property that is located in the same area. Actually, I'm going to pull it up here potentially. And those so the idea here is to combine the properties with the CRA property with the city property so that we can go through a disposition process in the near future for redevelopment of that site, as opposed to having the CRA and the city having two separate lots that we're having to worry about. So the next steps, once we do the unification of these two properties to the city, would be then to come back to you for a surplus resolution. And during the surplus resolution presentation, we'll provide to you what we what the intention is in terms of negotiation. We'll have appraisals done and then come back to you with that resolution for surplus. And then eventually, if we reach an agreement with a third party for redevelopment of the property, we come back to you within a sales agreement. So this is just a first step in a multi-pronged process of redeveloping this site eventually.
So actually, all we're doing, all you're asking us to do today is to approve the conveyance to the city?
That is correct. And then in the city's next meeting, the City Commission, we would then accept those those properties.
Okay. And it's the ones highlighted in blue?
The one highlighted in blue is a city property. And then the two that are right above it, which are part of the old railroad spur, are going to be the CRA lots. So.
The kind of rectangular ones that were previously highlighted.
Right. If you can see my arrow here.
Yes.
See those two? That's that is a two CRA properties, which are two long slivers that are undevelopable on their own. So.
All right. Very good. Any questions or comments, commissioners? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. Will we be hearing at the next meeting, I guess, the talk about what the plan is for this property? Or when will that when will we hear that?
So the next hearing, you're going to just going to accept the properties. And then shortly after that, within 30 days, we will come back with the surplus resolution. At that point, we'll be prepared to present what the potential use of the property will be, including the type of use and then potentially what the what negotiations we'll be entering into. And then we'll come back with some kind of a resolution on either a sales or lease contract.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-46.
It's been moved. Is our second. It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Okay, so that is the final item on the CRA agenda. Thank you for your patience, board members. And this meeting is hereby adjourned.